551, 041551050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. We have three board members present at this time. Chairman Friedman, Dr. Lilon, and Adam Avalos. Mr. Director Herb Houston and Jason Starkey submitted notices they would not be here at the meeting. We do have the -- we may please move to item two, Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the State of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings you bestow on us on a daily basis and for giving us the opportunity to do the work of the Water District. We trust in you, Lord, that you will continue to guide us and provide us with the wisdom to make the right decisions on the identity before us. Father, it is through your guidance that helps us to make the decisions that will benefit our customers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, Invitation to the Audience for Public Comments. Staff, Board, Audience, if you'd like to share anything at this time. Thank you. Move on to item four. Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the workshop meeting and regular meeting for February 26, 2020.
I will.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lilon. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item five, General Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I just wanted to cover that on May, March the third.
For the record, we have Board Member Starkey joining.
On March the 3rd, we had started passing information out on the coronavirus, just to be ahead and be proactive about it and make sure that employees are aware of things that they need to do before, you know, leaving the job site or getting into back to the job site. We've been purchasing some safety supplies, the germex and wipeies, Lysol. You know, we're trying to just get ahead and practice and get prepared, you know, because we don't want to fall behind. And we've talked about if it really happens that somebody's sick and, you know, what the procedures are. So, just to let the Board know that we're on top of it and...
Do you think we should put a public statement out, or that water isn't affected by this? I don't know for -- I don't really know details, but I know every entity or almost a lot of entities and hotel, airlines, a lot of people putting out PSAs out there. Is that something that we should look into or investigate?
Well, right now, I don't think there's any here in the valley that's happening. So, the information that we're getting was just preparation.
Just the water safe and it's not transmittable by water or anything? I'm just throwing a comment. I don't know.
Yeah, well, our water treatment that we have now, we're safe with the microfiltration. And that's why on the second subject here, that on the bond committee update, I'm going to have some information on that, you know, that we want to go to the water treatment and show our microfiltration and have like an open house on that one. So, the students and parents can go and see it, you know, and do tours. But that would be on the second one. But yes, in preparation for the coronavirus, we're just getting ahead and buying supplies, chlorox, you know, to clean our areas. And we're doing that already, starting to clean the most touched areas and the most areas that everybody's going through. Keep cleaning them. And before we leave our area at 15 till 5, start wiping the area and spraying some Lysol.
Those are good precautionary measures. Does everybody understand the employees that if they're sick, they won't be punished if they got to stay home, go to the doctor, get an excuse, like all that stuff is clear? Because that's the real thing, right? If somebody's having symptoms, they got to stay home.
Right. And we did discuss that today's meeting. And we've been discussing, you know, procedures to come up with procedures. If you see an employee and the managers are aware of it, you ought to talk to the managers and make them aware. If they see an employee that's got a cough or is -- we're treating it like the flu symptoms. If they see somebody with that, to make sure that they go home, go to the doctor, and before they come back to work, get a release from the doctor.
There's a lot of -- right now, there's a lot of flus and strep. I mean, just in my own practice, I have three people sick right now. But it's -- and of course, every time somebody's sick, they have coronavirus. Out of abundance of caution, you know, I tell my staff, stay home. You're not going to get in trouble. And so, our staff needs to know the same thing, because it would be really bad if somebody like did contract it and then spread it to everybody else and then we were -- had nobody to man the water stations, right? That would be trouble. And Scott would be out there. We would want to see him. Scott would turn the wheels. So, that's why -- I'm sure everybody knows that, but I sat my staff down and made sure they knew this week. Not going to be in trouble. You know, if you don't feel well, stay home. You know, we're going to survive here until you get back.
And that's the kind of message we're sending out to employees. We're trying to make sure that we're starting to get away from gathering in meetings, you know, like emails, going through emails. HR is sending emails to all the managers to let the employees know. You know, just we're trying to get away from meetings, you know, as much as we can, just to practice, at least to know that it can happen here. So, all those things that are -- that we're being proactive and being prepared for is we're doing it. Anything that comes up daily, we'll bring it up and gather and have a meeting and talk about it and see how we're going to let the employees know. And if it ever gets to closing the main office, we'll have the drive-through where people come in and if it ever gets to that point. So, that's in the plan. That's all I have. Any questions on the -- and we're trying to get information from the Texas Water Conference that we're having at the end of the month, the 31st through April the 3rd, I believe. So, hoping that they're doing the same thing, trying to just be preventive of information to everybody that they're doing their best to, you know, like increase availability, hand sanitizer, and all. What we're doing is what they're doing too. So, trying to make sure, and we'll get the latest update before that conference by the next meeting of April, March the 25th is our next meeting here, board meeting. So, whatever they update they give us for that conference, I'll bring it up to the Board. So, that's all I have for that part. And then the next part is the bond committee update. We're still are going to be active on the bond committee presentations. We need to let them have, take charge of it and do their part now. And we're going to back them up also and try to have another meeting this week to gather all the group again. And we have like at least another 10 areas or sites that we can go visit and do presentations. I think the golf course is one of them. Golf course and put on the other ones. Rural State? Yes, I think the Rural State. Realtors? Yes. Anything else that you can add to that? Because I know that I had that information to, you know, say something about the...
I've got the invitation about the social media insights. I was asked to get some, present some information so you, I guess, know kind of how, where we're going with Facebook primarily.
Please.
So, how is the Laguna Madre Water District performing on Facebook to reach our community? Okay, so, this is just the last 28 days. There has been an increase in page likes of 204. First, the top one says 321 page views, page previews, 12, post reach, 5,902. Story reach, just one. We only had one story, which is when you, you don't do it as a post, but you do it as a story that pops up. And we only did that when we reached the 500 likes. So, that's what that was about. The post engagement, 2,230. Videos that they clicked on, 265. And that, I believe, the, yeah, we had a couple of different videos for Valentine's Day and Christmas, you know, wishing them, but we also had the one about the bond. 204 page followers, that's an increase, or page followers during that time. And let's go to the next one. Okay, so, total page likes currently are 616. We had an increase of 204, as we stated. And it kind of breaks down the age and gender there, in case you're interested. There's a few more women than men. The primary age is what, 38 to 44. And then the locations divided by cities. You know, we have some in Houston, San Antonio, Austin, McAllen. But primarily from Fort Isabel, we have 102 from Brownsville. South Padre Island, 86, Laguna Vista, 56, and a few others. As far as followers, maybe after, in February, we had a big jump, and that's where the, most of the 200 followers came from. We made it a point to send invitations to invite to like the page. And we also did a, one of the, one of the posts that we did, we did, we boosted the post, and that received a lot. And I'll talk more about that one in a minute. So, that just shows the same thing, 616. So, there's, I think there were like two unlikes, like two or three during different times. But other than that, the spike was on February 7th when we did that ad. And where page likes happened, so primarily, you see it says other. So, that is incorporating those that we invited, but also those who are going to our website. Because there, you can just press like, like us on Facebook. It pops up when you open the webpage to LMWD.org. And so, if you click it there, it, that's where we had that big spike too. There's a few from news feeds and searches, but not very many. Total page views, there were more than, I think the highest was about 66 at that, at that point in February. Okay, you may not be able to see this, but I'm going to highlight a few of them. So, these are the different posts that we've made, we've done so far. And if you see the third, the fifth column, it says reach, 747. So, our last post that we did was reached 747 people and so forth. So, just to highlight a couple, the third one down the line is the one we, the presentation for the bond at the coffee and conversation at the island. And that so far is the highest, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. Well, second highest. And then here on February 6, it was a post about our Superior Water. And that, if you see, there's two colors. There's a yellow on that little bar. The one that says 4.5K. I don't have a pointer, but does this point?
We see it. What about it?
Oh.
We see it.
Oh, you see it?
Yeah.
Okay, anyways, so 4.5K. So, that...
So, okay. What's the 4.5?
So, the light yellow is the organic, which it means that it's just whoever saw it because we posted it. The dark yellow was because we did an ad, what you call a boost. So, we paid for a boost and that made a big difference on not only getting likes, but also getting engagement.
Engage.
Okay, so, I'm going to go to the specifics. Okay, so this one is the second best performing one, the one I talked about at the coffee and conversation. So, there was 864 people reached, and there were some shares there, 15 shares. There were, of course, engagement. So, engagement includes, it was 224 people engaged. And that includes either they liked it, or they clicked on it, or they forwarded it. So, that one's doing pretty good. This one is the best performing post, which is the one about the Superior Public Water System.
Thought we could crowd everything.
Well, they seem to like it.
If I could interrupt for just a minute, right? I think you guys are doing an incredible job. Not everybody up here is Facebook savvy, and I'm not professing to be most Facebook savvy, but you've engaged me a lot, and I appreciate it. I've been able to track our bond presentations via Facebook and through you updating your status and communicating that. And I think I have to be a fact from time to time, which I was going to encourage you to do. And that's fine, you know, because separate but same topic, you know, when we went to Vegas with my company at the National Builders Show, I can't tell you how many huge builders were talking about you need to do more videos. If you're not doing videos, if you're not engaging on Facebook and social platforms like Instagram and all those other things, then you're missing the boat. And so, I don't know if some of you may notice, but I've been doing some videos, right? So, I'm turning this YouTube sensation. But it's really doing the things that you're talking about. It's engaging more of our customers. It's giving us more opportunity, put ourselves out there, but also inform the public of our product. And then how that helps us as a Water District is it really educates, you know, our consumer about the superior ratings, about the measures that we're taking to improve our capital, you know, help me hear capital what? Capital improvements that we're going to make.
Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you. And projects that are going on. And so, you're engaging a lot. One thing I would, one trick I learned, I should say, is hashtag as many people as you can. Like, an example, when we do our videos now, we're only getting like a few people looking at them. But once I started hashtagging Whirlpool and Hardyboard and Owens Corning and Moe and Pictures, like anybody that like, you know, the engineers that we work with, you hashtag them, or, you know, they have this larger audience that's going to feed and help. You know, the more likes you get over here, obviously we're speaking in likes right now. It's not like Bitcoin, I guess, of course. But it's really, you know, it's the new newspaper. You know, no one goes out on the front porch anymore and grabs a newspaper and sees what's going on in the world. They look on these things. And they're either looking at, you know, media forums, or they're looking on Facebook. And I'm just really proud of you guys. I think we've done exceptional work in everything that you're trying to break down for us, you know? So, I just want to commend you and say this.
Board Member, good evening. Victor Valdovinos, also with Grant Access. Just wanted to bring up that we also share it on our personal page. And that's to get even more people. And obviously, we didn't track that because that's on the personal side. But that's just to get more traffic into the Laguna Madre Water District page. We have also utilized, we got to 500 likes, and we put it public when we want to get to the 1,000 likes. And so, we encourage, if you are on Facebook, let us know. We'll help you on sharing the page so we can get and achieve that goal. Because obviously, the more people that see it, the more people that are engaged. And obviously, you know, with things that we're proposing to the general public, we all want them to be engaged in what we're doing.
And thank you again. And along those lines, one more thought is, in the beginning of us, in this marriage, right, we talked about driving, using this as a conduit to drive it to our website, right? And so, you know, all these social platforms are really to be used like that. So, I would encourage you to continue doing what you're doing, but also let them know, hey, log on at this website. Know that we just updated. Know that it should be more consumer friendly. Let us know how we're doing, yada, yada, yada. And then if we can just get more attention there, I think that's even going to help us do a better job of serving our community.
Okay, so, anyway, so that was the, this one was because of the boost. It, and it went to everyone who lived in the Laguna Madre area. That was all social media. So...
Can I ask how much those boosts cost, or how does that?
That boost was $20.
I had a credit, so we utilized the credit for it. So, we did it as a, just getting to the...
And for $20, you got that? That's awesome.
Yes, yes.
Sometimes it loses $5.
Well, what we, we just spoke about it recently, and we want to utilize, obviously, this for, we're going to make a flyer. That's the next thing coming along. We're on second gear. We haven't shifted yet. So, at the moment, we do shift. Trust me, we will, we will put it in your face. Whether you like it or not, it's going to be there. It's going to pop up. And that's all through sponsorship. Yes.
Then coming back to that, will we see more of the bond committee coming in and activate their part?
And then this last one. So, this, no, the other one. It's the second to the last. So, this, this post was put yesterday, actually. We had already placed the story that came out in the press about the five employees that received their certification.
It's a great one.
And so, we had posted that, the news article, I think Friday, last week. Now, I posted this yesterday, and this one surpassed it.
Yes.
So, and it's just a picture, but it shows all the, all five of them, because I told them that they were going to come. And so, so they're, they already are up at 772 post reach. So, and that's just in one day, basically.
That's, that's great.
So, we're excited. So, what comes next? So, we want to increase the presence on Twitter and Instagram, which we've just, you know, put it out there less than a month ago. And they're not doing so good. So, we want to make sure and put more emphasis, not emphasis necessarily, but...
The hashtags.
Put a little bit more on there. Yes.
You could do a little Facebook too. A hashtag whirlpool. It immediately pulls that audience to, it goes on their feed, I should say. It goes on their feed. Then anybody looking at that feed might catch a glimpse of your feed.
And so, we have a good opportunity. World Water Day is March 22nd. So, we, we're trying to plan something. It's a Sunday, but we're trying to plan something maybe to, to last kind of like the whole month, since the bond election is, starts around April 20th, I believe. So, we want to kind of focus on conservation and do different things like that.
We're also talking to different cities to see if they'll do a proclamation for us. So, we're, again, capturing each community so they can get on board.
And then participating in community events, there's some, some community events coming up. I know there's the coronavirus, but so far, the events are going on. So, it's a good opportunity to talk to people about the bond and conservation and, you know, different things that are important.
And I love the conservation approach too. And you can use this as an opportunity to tell them, you know, the advantages of having an irrigation water meter and the savings that can be incurred with that.
For Water Smart.
That's right. That's big.
You know, every week, you can, a few days, you can just educate them on things outside of bond. Like, it doesn't just need to be bond, 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 right?
Of course.
It could be, it could be other elements that we want them to be aware of too, that might not be...
Yes. We want them to know that, all the good things that the Water District is doing, so that they know that they can put trust into the organization.
Devil's advocate, and then I'll quit talking. Promise, Dr. Lilon. So, one of the concerns we had about putting ourselves out there in social media is the pushback or the negative fancy that's sitting alone, you know, in a beanbag, eating burritos, talking about what a bad job we're doing, right? A little cut from a movie I like. But anyway, so, have we received any of that? And if so, how are we handling that?
The answer is yes. And we're very quick to respond as soon as we know about it. And I want to thank Eddie, because he's actually sent us some heads up on things.
Can you share some of the negativity or some of the negative feedback?
Sure.
Confidentially between us, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we, because I'm not aware of where we, nor am we addressed.
There was one that was going really south, and we were able to respond with facts, and it stopped immediately.
Oh, wow.
Immediately. We had no more negative responses. As a matter of fact, we had people out in the community back us up and say, yes, I've been involved. Yes, the taste of the water's better, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll share that particular one with you.
And that wasn't even on our Facebook page?
It was on a group, but I'm...
I haven't heard or aware. Yeah, I would like to know.
Absolutely.
And my opinion is, our approach should be like, shh, you know? It should be like, okay, let's, let's hear it out. And then standard responses, unemotional responses, right?
Factually.
That's really why you're the professional on the room regarding this public engagement with facts. But then also, if it's, if it gets enough hits, or if it recurs enough, then you bring it to our attention, be like, hey, we might want to take a look at this. It's been brought to our attention that, you know, maybe it funnels through Harlow's furze, and then if necessary, comes to us, and we can make some decisions that might help address whatever need is or perceived.
Absolutely.
If that makes sense.
Absolutely.
But as far as quantity, we haven't had hardly any.
Knock on wood, everyone.
There were how many in the two addresses?
Probably three total. And one of them is borderline. Could have gone either way. And I kind of veered it to the positive aspect of things.
Great job.
And then we had one customer that was making a complaint about, you know...
Through Messenger.
Through Messenger to us. So, we had to contact the...
She contacted, I'm sorry. Yeah, she contacted Meany. Meany actually got well out there that very day, and they're scheduled to fix the problem next week, this upcoming week. So, it's, it's, we're on it.
That's wonderful.
We're on it. And we will need a policy to figure out how we're going to handle those things. This way, everyone follows it. Everyone's on the same page. Everyone knows the routine and does it.
Great. Thank you.
And then, so part of that whole, for the bond, we're planning the open house, which is on April...
We'll get the dates and everything for you. We're actually strategically placing it right before early voting, et cetera, et cetera. And we plan to do a few private, more intimate presentations. And so, it's going to tie all in with that. As a matter of fact, today, I had a really good lead on, on another presentation that we can do that's coming up. And it'll, it'll be a little more intimate. And what, what those are good for is so they can become our mouthpiece.
Of course.
You know, we're very sensitive to that, because all we can do is give them the facts, you know, as the vendor for Laguna Madre Water District. But usually, once you show them the facts, you know, they, they immediately get on board and start telling other people. That's what we've, we've had thus far, except for one meeting. And even that meeting, although when we exited the room, we were a little nervous about it, but there were some follow-ups that Mr. Avalos can tell you about that were very positive, that came out of that meeting.
And then we plan to visit businesses and distribute bond flyer, maybe a flyer that has a little more information about when is the, when is the election and to make sure that everybody knows when we vote for that. And so, we'll be doing that along with the scheduled presentations that we'll be doing. For example, RE/MAX here in Fort Isabel. I, RE/MAX, so. I have a call so that we can call into them so that we can go and do a presentation to them. And that's something that, you know, we can do.
It's more intimate.
If they need more information, then, you know, then we can have more employees, you know, talk to them, one to one. But that's kind of what we want. We want to visit them personally. And then spotlight on employees and partners. Because that last, yesterday's post is doing so well, I think, you know, people want to see more of what's actually happening. So, we're trying to, especially right now during spring break, that they're going to be probably working a lot. We want to at least try to get the pictures in there and... be probably working a lot, we want to at least try to get the pictures in there, and there's anything that they, they need to address as far as emergencies, hopefully they don't, but in case they do, that's something that we kind of want to highlight. And, and then even after spring break, kind of highlight like the different departments.
Yes.
Customer service, and talk to them a little bit, and put, put them there and...
Pictures.
Yes.
Pictures, and give them the heads up, like, let, you know, when you're going to come and photograph your staff, and then throw a photo out there. And it could just be as simple as office hours, and, you know, here to serve, and been serving this district for, you know, however many years, if they're comfortable divulging that information without aging them, but we want to humanize the whole thing, you know, and we talked about that, too, so.
Know your, know who the rep is, or...
Then they'll walk in and feel like they know, you know, people. I think that's a great thing to create.
So one of the things that we talked about early on, and we bring you back to that, is generational tradition. And what that means is, we've had people that their grandfathers worked here, their fathers worked here, their uncles worked here, et cetera, et cetera. And with Alicia working on the school district side, to get that career readiness going, where they can come work here right after high school, it's an important and an integral part of what we're doing. We, we already know we're going to get lots of, lots of likes, and that's the way to funnel most of these people that are voters into our webpage so they can stay engaged.
And then, you know, tag employees, and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Their family and friends, you know.
Yes, 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 that's in the works.
Great job, guys, I'm good here.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you both, kind of. This is a big work in progress.
The only thing I would, I would add, and I did talk to Richard about this earlier, I still get on occasion, I get people that, I think part of the reason this came up is because a person that approached me about this today said, I received your flyer, but there was no date, there was no amount, there was no terms. It showed me how much I was going to pay, so that kind of information needs to get out there quickly.
We will work on that tomorrow, make it priority, and hopefully by Monday noon, everything will be ready in the, in the Facebook. Obviously, with everyone's blessing, we'll move forward and even have those readily available for customers to come.
The other thing I was going to suggest is, I was listening to Mr. Alon talk about the bond committee coming up and doing some things. I would like to see more coordination in that regard between, instead of everybody doing their own thing individually, maybe we could have some coordination between the bond committee. Maybe you could organize that, Mr. Alon.
We did have a meeting last week on that.
And make sure that we're, all our efforts are in sync, you know, that's really the only reason to do that.
Right. Of course, it's getting bigger after this month, after, after this month, I mean, everything, you know, things are getting more active and...
Because they can do, they can do the advocating, the bond committee can do the advocating. My understanding is that our, our media people cannot do advocating, they can simply put out...
Correct. And we did contact our attorney, and they told us, uh-uh, can't do that.
So, so anyway, I, I would just like to see more coordinating than what we're trying to do, because maybe that might make it easier for everybody.
Absolutely.
And as far as us on the board, I know I'm, I get presentations every Saturday in HEB. So I would encourage the rest of us to do the same, to talk to people, because I, I tried to get a meeting with the, with the state board on the island, and they wouldn't listen to our meeting, they didn't want to hear it. So I approached some of the membership, and I talked to a couple of them, and they said, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. And so, if that's what it comes to, if that's what we have to do, then that's what I'll do. I have to give a one-on-one presentation to people, that's what I'll do.
And I'm engaging in that capacity in the conference as well, just from an information standpoint. And they all know that I serve in this capacity, and so they're in office, whether I want them there or not, because they know where to find me, but it's really, it's really been some productive conversations that I think has had some really positive outcomes, so I can mention for that. On a different note, and outside of this, can you help him get on Facebook, Mr. Avalos?
Absolutely, absolutely. I told him...
I just don't get engaged with it. I, I do watch what's happening.
I would understand even more.
I do, I, what I do, what I do with Facebook, just so you know, is that I do watch what's happening, and I actually go and call these people and set up meetings with them, that, and, and I even said, I had a meeting with a couple, and I said, listen, it's okay if you do not agree with my bond, but I want you to go and do it with the facts, okay? That's why we're here. And they, they were very clear to me and told me, you know, we're always on Facebook, you know, and I said, that's precisely why we're here.
Yes.
I said, this is why I set up a meeting with you, because I want you to understand what the facts are, and if after that you don't support it, then that's fine, but you need the facts before you, and after our lunch meeting, they were on board.
Wow.
So...
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I guess he is on Facebook.
Indirectly, yes.
Thank you, guys both, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that'll be all. We are coordinating, and Victor was there at the meeting, with the bond committee to get, get them active now. And this is a perfect timing for them to go out and, and do their part. That's the message that we have to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Yes, sir.
Let's move along to item six, Director of Operations report.
Chairman, members of the board, the report for February on distribution side shows the decrease of 35 call-out service costs compared to February of 2019. The majority of the drops were in profiles. We were doing a lot of profiles in 2019 where we had to go out and get the information for the customer. With this new system, now we just look it up and it's there. We don't have to go out and get that, that information. And then, of course, we had an increase in disconnect customers and water taps, along with occupant change. So that was basically the difference in, in the call-outs for the distribution. In the collection side, we also had 30, a drop of 30 calls February of this year compared to February of last year. And the big difference was in preventive maintenance. We had 28 calls that were dropped this February compared to, we had 27 compared to 55 last year. And then sewer, sewer taps went up by five. So there were some other small changes which made up the difference. And that's basically the report for service calls and call-out operations.
Thank you.
Sure.
Let's move along to item seven, District Attorney's Report, Charles.
So if the list on the whiteboard isn't enough, I, I guess this update's mainly for the projects where, you know, we're going to be using our fund balance. I mean, the first one being at Water Plant One, the use of chlorine dioxide, where, you know, January 27th, we got the approval from TCEQ to move that, our manual generator from Water Plant Two to Water Plant One. And so we're in the process of getting the plans review team over at the state approved for construction. And so one of the things we wanted to verify is if the pipelines going for the raw water pump station toward Appenix were in place, and it turns out the 10-inch is the only one that's active, there's a parallel 14-inch, but it's cut, and really not, it's going to take a lot of work to get that back in service. And regardless, we, we actually need a 24-inch pipe to get that disinfection up to 5 million gallons per day, which is what our goal is. So what we're trying to do at this point is to just do a bid for the materials in-house, and to just have our construction crew do the install, and try to have that about 240 feet of 24-inch pipe in place by the end of the year. So that's, that's basically one of those projects that, you know, as we see the conditions of the build, we want to try to get it quick and get ready for the summer. And so that's, that's basically, you know, I've already kind of given the estimate here a little earlier, about an hour ago, to Eddie, so we can start kind of getting that idea moving. So hopefully we're good with, starting to run with something to that effect, so we can be ready for the summer, without getting Water Plant Number One, you know, running at this point, and also have a pipe in place for the ultimate pipe G E plan. But that's, I guess that's the first project of the, if there's any questions there. The second one is at Water Plant Two, the high-service pump stations, right now they have soft starts, but it's all from 1985, the original motor control center that's been replaced since they built the plant. And we're looking at replacing that motor control center with variable frequency drives, so we can have a kind of a stop-at-water hammer effect when pumps get turned on and off. And that was part of what we have in the budget. Right now, our balance is at 52,000, but to get the whole enclosure and all four drives done in one request, it's going to take about 150,000. So that's going to be another request that we're trying to get done this fiscal year as well, so we can just get that, those high-service pumps ready for the next generation, get fixed, dressed. And so that's, I guess that's the, that's the other project that's, that's coming right now. And the third one is the Tarpen Avenue and Island Avenue here in Port Isabel. Cornet Construction's doing the work. The sewer line's already in place. Overall, they're about 30% done with construction through the end of February, and the remaining work's water lines. And so there was 820 feet of water main that we thought was PVC, which is fine, and as we were putting in the sewer services, we saw that most of that's still asbestos cementite. So we're, we're trying to add an additional 820 feet of water line through a change order, which we present at the next meeting, so we can get new pipe under new pavement, and we don't have any residue or anything breaking, we're about to come in with a new street. So, so that's about a 23, $24,000 request. But we're also working with a credit for paving, because, you know, we have the city doing network. So, so that'll be part of what we're presenting here on March 25th meeting. So that's, you know, sort of the other one that's coming up. And then, last but not least, is the, at Andy Boy, the sewer plant there by the burning center, we did have a grid wolf, a pilot, that was running out there. It was the first pilot done in North America. It was a product that they brought in from Germany. And so their, their pilot work is already done, it does a good job, and they were planning to donate the equipment, but the condition for the donation is that we have to set it up for permanent installation, and that requires an elevated structure to get that at the elevation pretty much at the same as the bar screen. So there's a major cost associated with that, with that construction work. But at the same time, you know, we're talking maybe over $500,000, but we're going to be getting grid removal in place at one of our facilities, the Andy Boy facility at the island, which is, you know, in our best interest to try to find a way to get it done, especially we have equipment being put in the process. So, I mean, if it's okay to kind of already add Andy Boy to our future revenue, you know, we're just kind of trying to...
What's the value of the equipment that they're going to give?
Oh, I, I, I haven't equated the numbers yet. I mean, I can follow up with that at the next meeting. I still, basically from our, from the report that Garber did back in 2017, it's using that estimate, but just kind of trimming it down to deduct the equipment cost. I mean, I'm thinking, like, our headworks over here at Port Isabel was, what, 2.6 million? So we're talking, you know, a million-dollar facility, but we're going to have equipment, maybe with 300,000 that's getting donated, so to that bet, I mean, that's just kind of real ballpark without looking at it in better detail.
Tell me again, this is, for the, for the wastewater plant on the...
Yeah, the wastewater plant at the burning center, Andy Boy wastewater plant. And so the grid will, it's, it's a new product, it's the grid washing units that we have in Port Isabel, it's the same manufacturer, but they were trying to enter this into the market here in North America, get it up and going to, like, we had some people coming from Hawaii to take a look at, you know, stuff like that. And so pretty much they're done with the demonstration that it works, they did all their third-party tests that they need to do for their pilot, to get it, to be able to introduce it to the market, and they're willing to donate the equipment, you know, for a purpose.
Who, who originated the, the project, or who?
Oh, well, Garber's the one, like, back in, you know, when they were working with us in 2017, they're the ones who connected us. People was looking for a site to run their pilot, and then they, they said, hey, we've got a great spot over here. And so, you know, pretty much everything's been a no pause to get the...
Rust thus far.
Right, at this stage. But that's, that's kind of where it's sitting right now.
I guess we just have to crunch the numbers and bring it back, I mean, that's the...
Yeah, that'd be interesting to see what the maintenance on, on that is going to be. But I do know that, I mean, I get on occasions, I get people that ask me, when are you guys going to do some work on the north end, on that plant, the wastewater plant there? And especially the tank, because it's looking pretty bad now.
Oh, well.
You know, when is that up for?
Oh, the rehab, I mean, it's not even, I don't have it listed on my schedule, but we will do annual inspections and kind of, I mean, I still say that's in the three- to five-year range, but we did a little...
Well, I think we need to do something about the rust with it before the three to five-year, I mean, that's, we don't want it, we don't want it to get any worse than what it is, and you got rust coming down the side of it.
On both tanks, I think both tanks are the ones that need, for next budget year, get them covered.
Yeah, we need to, we need to start, before it gets worse, I guess.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, yeah, it's about that time, I mean, it's in what, approaching the 10-year mark? So since it was done, like, I think it was like 20, 20 years, we have, so, we've already done that.
Yep, that's right.
And that concludes my report. Oh, well, also, one of the things we mentioned, for Water Plant One, that construction maintenance department, I mean, there's, they're using, there are workshops in some of those old buildings that are supposed to get torn down, because they're just old, and so we just want to make sure that they, they still have workshops, maybe look at a new building, so we're at Water Plant One, or...
Portable building or something, or...
Well, no, it would probably be brick and mortar, but I mean, it'd be, you know, maybe a 20 by 50, or, you know, something...
Tree fab, or just build a ground up or something?
Probably just build a ground up. Just give, give them a spot to work for what's going to get torn down when we do the microtization of the buildings. But we'll probably coordinate all that with the site plan, and see if that can all get done after the mail-in. That's, that concludes the report.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Let's move along to item eight, Director of Finance report, Eddie.
So I'd like to try to answer one of the questions that was brought up at the, at the last meeting concerning financing our, our tax bond project with Texas Water Development Board financing versus an open-market financing. So you have a, a presentation that we were printed out for you today, it's also in the packet.
The rates have changed since 2/28 already?
Yeah, the, the, the open market is what you see in the, in the first column. The, the projects that we're currently financing are in the bottom half of this chart. The drinking water, SRF, is the type of program that we're looking at. Our, in that, in that second column, you see what the Texas Water Development Board rates are, and what the, what the variance is in the last column is the amount of the subsidy that, that we could get by going with the Texas Water Development Board. If you go to the, the next slide, you'll see if we get the, the financing at 20 years in an open-market situation, that would be at 1.36% with total payments of $31 million over 20 years, and the average annual payment at 1.5 million. With the Texas Water Development Board financing, with the full equivalency financing, that's going to be at 0%. Could mean our, our average annual payment would be about 1.38 million. And the, the savings, you can see, is over $3 million, almost $3.5 million, and on an annual basis, $174,000. If we were to go with the 30-year, which is the next slide, that rate, the interest rate is a little bit higher, so the total with open-market financing would be $33.9 million. But you stretch that over 30 years, so that average annual payment is lower, it's at 1.1 million. And again, with the, with that same total payment at zero interest, now your annual is $920,000, and you have a savings because of the, the higher interest of $6 million and the average annual payment savings of over $200,000. So what, what are the requirements to get this financing? So we have to follow disadvantaged business enterprise procurement. There is a stringent environmental review. There is a, the Davis Beacon prevailing wages. We have to make sure that all the subcontractors that are working on this project, they're all getting paid prevailing wages according to the Davis Beacon Act, and the, all the supplies that are going into the project that they are, according to the American Iron and Steel Act. On the next slide, there's additional program requirements, reporting, outlay reporting in order to get the funds disbursement. There is a review of financial, managerial, and technical... There is a review of financial managerial and technical capability. There is, there has to be an updated water conservation plan. Our project has to be consistent with the state water plan and there's some additional annual financial audits, some additional work that would be done with the audit. Go to the next slide, we see the time-wise, it's basically a three-step pre-application process of filling out project information forms, having a comment, a public comment period, an invitation to submit the application, conference calls, pre-application conference calls. That process takes approximately one to two months. There's a six to nine-month application stage where we prepare the application, there is a review, administrative review, then a technical review, and then finally the board, Texas Water Development Board gives us a commitment of funds. Finally, there's a post-application stage where they close it and the project begins. So, total time is approximately nine to 14 months for the application stages. On the, we go to the next slide, we see what is the difference between open market financing review versus Texas Water Development Board review? So, there's a difference on the environmental clearance. TCEQ still has to review all of the open market financing. So, there, it's just a separate agency that's going to be doing the review. Under Texas Water Development Board, that process takes three to four months of review, environmental clearance. The preliminary designs, there's no review by TCEQ. On Texas Water Development Board, yes, and that would take about one to two months. Final design, TCEQ would, that process would be about one to two months. Under Texas Water Development Board, about three to four months. Bid documents, TCEQ does not review those. On the Texas Water Development Board, yes, they do and it's about one month. Project closeouts, TCEQ just requires a letter. Texas Water Development Board has a letter and a walkthrough process. So, the timeline, the typical project schedule under TCEQ review is about 12 to 13 months. The typical project schedule under Texas Water Development Board review, it takes up to 20 months where construction time would be available.
I guess, it kind of comes down to numbers because when you add the requirements, this requirement and those requirements, I mean, getting your project off the ground, year and a half delay versus open financing, it adds up, that's a big, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons associated with that. There is a huge money savings, but it's a lot of work to get that savings.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, that's really what it comes down to. Can we work with all of these requirements? Yes, we can. We can work with all these requirements.
No, we've done it through the meter project.
Yes. The other project, the one that we're currently working on, the lift station project, is a Texas Water Development Board project with a full subsidy. That's how we got the 0.75% interest rate and that's already following all these requirements. So, we feel confident that we can do the same.
That's very good to hear.
Yes.
Thanks for the explanation.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions, comments? Discounted money work for it.
Is that all of it?
Let's move along to.
We can handle that.
Yes. Let's move along to item nine, discuss, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for 2020. Questions, comments?
Our revenues are all on target.
Anyone want to review anyone in particular, you want to go through them at the chance? Okay.
No, sir.
Next step is a motion made by Dr. Alon for approval.
I make a motion for approval? Oh, second.
Second of Mr. Starkey. For all those in favor, aye, they are, any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item 10, consider and discuss for possible approval of roof repair at Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant.
Chairman, members of the board, we need to do some repairs on the Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant. We have the SCADA system, computers, equipment there that we want to protect.
How big is it, what kind of roof is it?
It's a shingle roof.
How many squares, you know how many squares?
I think it's 30 to 35.
Two squares, 35? How much you want? One second. Any warranty coming up, five, 10-year warranty?
10-year warranty on labor, 40-years warranty on materials.
That's right, that is right.
Yes.
Come with the number again, 11,000?
I mean, it will be an underlayment that they call ice and water on top where the computer and the SCADA system is and the, another plastic underlayment on the rest of the roof. Based on the cost and the warranty, we are recommending going with Texas platinum roofing and restoration.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Motion for approval by Mr. Ver.
One second.
Second by Mr. Alon, for all those in favor.
Aye.
They are, none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Everything will be dry soon. Let's move along to item 12, I'm sorry, item 11, consider and discuss for possible approval purchase of a sludge pump for Water Plant Number Two.
Yes, we need to replace a 20-plus-year-old pump, vertical sludge pump for the Water Plant Number Two. Right now, we are down to one and we are recommending going with pumps of Houston for 19,996 dollars. The one that is not in service, we already did a lot of repairs on that, on it, and it's not working anymore. We tried to get one from Quarters Pump Station, but it didn't fit on Water Plant Number One. So, we need to get a new one.
I make a motion, please. Motion made by Dr. Alon, second by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item 12, consider and review expenditures from February 16th, 2020 through February 29th, 2020. Questions, comments about anyone in particular who want to discuss, look at, review, otherwise we need a motion to acknowledge.
Aye, Carlos.
Motion to acknowledge by Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Alon, for all those acknowledged, they have, motion to acknowledge, Mr. Starkey carries. We are now moving on to item 13, executive session permitted by the open meeting, Direct PTC Government Code Section 551001, Ed Security Section 551071. Two, consultation with attorney, item A, update on legal matters concerning ratepayers appeal of the raw water rate. Item B, discuss legal matters concerning a memorandum of understanding MOU with drug enforcement, law enforcement agencies regarding customers' account. Need a motion to go into executive session at 6:30.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Alon, we are in executive session. Need a motion to come out of executive session at 6:41 PM. Motion made by Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Alon, all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, we are out of executive session. Item A, update on legal matters concerning ratepayers' appeal of the raw water rate. Need a motion to accept the contract as proposed.
Sorry?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the contract as written?
Proposed by, approved by Mr. Alon, seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item B, discuss legal matters concerning a memorandum of the understanding MOU with drug enforcement and law enforcement agencies regarding customers' account. We will proceed as directed on that one. We will adjourn this meeting this evening at 6:42 PM.